This time I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on June 13th. The council does have the minutes of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
Move to approve.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. The next item is agenda item number two. This is a public hearing on the cannabis and lower potency hemp product interim ordinance. With us tonight is our city attorney Pam Whitmore. She's connected by Zoom. She will be part of the public hearing presentation, but I'll call first on Sharon Hanson to conduct the public hearing. She'll introduce Pam, and then we'll open it up for any public comment as part of this public hearing. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, as we are all aware, we've had this as a discussion topic the last two council meetings, and we've had some very nice summary overview by our city attorney Pam Whitmore. We have since continued to learn more about the cannabis legislation and going forward on some of the requirements under the proposed law and also what we are allowed to do. It was a recommendation to consider an interim ordinance as we are still sifting through some of the details, such as definitions and authority that the city might have in addition to the county as well. So our city attorney has drafted an interim ordinance for your consideration, and of course, introduction of this ordinance and a public hearing is required. And I will turn it over to city attorney Pam Whitmore to explain further the interim ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Pam?
Thank you, city administrator, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Very well.
Okay, good. Well, it's good to see you all. And this interim ordinance, as city administrator had referenced, has been in front of you as a discussion point for a few meetings. And so I won't spend a lot of time going over the details, but I'll highlight what we're doing here. So this is an interim ordinance, and it applies to both the lower level products, which currently are defined in Minnesota statutes 151.72, and will be, that particular statute will be sunsetting in March. And it will be then, those lower level hemp potency products, as they're being renamed, will be licensed as well by a state agency called the Office of Cannabis Management. That state agency also will be licensing what I'm referring to as the higher products, which the statute, the new statute refers to as cannabis products. So those are commercial businesses related to many different types of the sale, growth, manufacture, distribution of those higher level products. So as I've mentioned before, there is a state agency that's getting set up that needs to rule make. And so we have a lot of unanswered questions out there with respect to what that structure's going to look like. We have a general idea of the process that will be incorporating feedback from the city, but not really providing any licensing ability on the higher level products for the city. So those questions need to be answered through the rulemaking in addition to their rulemaking related to things such as environmental issues, other types of what the enforcement type action, which the city is, will be the one that's in charge of. So the city knows that it will have zoning capabilities for those higher and lower level products, and there's some suggested things from the Office of Cannabis Management, but they'll be actually working with cities and drafting a model ordinance. So it will be to our benefit to be able to see that model ordinance. The cities across the state right now are struggling with the lower level products. Some have put an interim ordinance in place on those products under, previously under the state statute and are unable to put another one on. So we will be watching to see what they do with those lower level products up until the point of when the Office of Cannabis Management will be licensing them, which then that authority will transfer over to the office. So as a result of all those moving pieces, we do have an interim ordinance in front of us recommending that we put a pause. We know that this is not going to be a product that is completely allowed to be prohibited. This interim ordinance does not impact personal possession and private growth of marijuana and these cannabis products. So just to make that clear, this is on the commercial business activity of this. So this allows us to study what different states and different cities will be doing, how it's going to impact our city of Marshall, how the Office of Cannabis Management has, what their expectations are, and what the rulemaking is going to be related to both higher and lower level products. Having said that, our municipal liquor under the state, the new state law, is allowed to sell these products now, which it was not able to sell the edible cannabinoid products, so those lower level products, previously under last year's legislation. They're able to do so now, and based on their experience with selling products that are regulated by state agencies and doing, and working with state agency on compliance checks and knowing how to really make sure that they're in compliance and checking for the age restrictions and the product restrictions as far as packaging and placement of these products, there is a recommendation in this interim ordinance to allow them, based on that experience, to sell the edible cannabinoid products that are currently defined under 151.72. And with that, that concludes my report. I'm open for questions.
Okay. Thank you, city attorney Whitmore. I would just add a couple of things. First off, as Pam had mentioned, this has been discussed by the city council at at least a couple of meetings. The city attorney did provide a work session, educational session earlier for the city council, and last week at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, E.J. Moberg and I attended a session on cannabis. And Pam summarized kind of the current status of things right now, and that the Office of Cannabis Management is not yet set up, is in the process of being set up. Rules will be drafted once that is set up. So we're in a time of, there's certainty that this will be allowed. There's uncertainty about the process right now, which is the purpose of the interim ordinance. Open it up for public comment, either from the audience or from the council, either public comment or questions for the city attorney.
I do have a question, just to clarify, Pam. If we approved this interim ordinance tonight, that would allow, that would repeal our emergency order from last year, correct?
So on your, oh, I'm sorry, I had to cut you off, council member.
And that would then allow our municipal liquor store to sell the drinkable and edible THC, or lower level products, as you call them, as soon as tomorrow?
Correct, council, Mr. Mayor, council member. So on your consent agenda, you will see that there is a repeal for that emergency ordinance, number 7-12-2022. And then you'll see in the findings and in the actual interim ordinance itself, it is the approval for the municipal exclusive municipal liquor to sell edible cannabinoid products, as those products are defined under 151.72, which includes both edibles and beverages.
One quick item, my understanding is that our ordinances don't take effect until they're published.
Okay.
Steve can get them published as Saturday, so it'd be Saturday is the first day that...
Now, I just, thank you for that clarification. I just...
Other input as part of the public hearing?
Question that I follow up on that, then, if we repeal this, the repeal doesn't become effective until the new ordinance is published then, or is there going to be a gap here?
So a repeal of an ordinance, it takes effect in the same manner as the adoption of an ordinance, so it would be after adoption and notice.
Okay.
So it'd be published Saturday, so the ability to sell this at our municipal liquor store would start Saturday?
Depending on what management decides.
Depending on what management decides.
Following that. Other input as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Pam, you might want to also add that you would anticipate that there'll be a future work session to go over a lot of other details, and that will happen probably later this year when we all know a lot more than we know right now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City administrator and I have been talking about good timing for that, and we're really identifying winter-spring timeframe, and the purpose is to give the Office of Cannabis Management some time for, to see how far they're getting in adopting their regulations and providing direction, in particular, directions to cities who are dealing with the lower level products right now after July 1st. So I think that we, as a city, can benefit from studying what other cities are having to deal with right away.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. We'll move then to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is repeal of the ordinance on the sale of hemp-derived THC food and beverages, the introduction of an ordinance...
Bob, shouldn't we approve the interim ordinance that was held at the public hearing?
Yes, we should. Yes, we should. Thank you, Jim. Let's back up then. We had the public hearing on the interim ordinance. Now, it would be appropriate to take action on the interim ordinance. Are there questions about the wording of that ordinance? If not, is there a motion on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion?
The only thing I want to add is I do support us taking our time on this, but I don't want it to drag out a whole year. I mean, it's coming. I think as the information comes, Pam, we should stay on top of this and capitalize on the business as, because this is a growth business. So that is, that is just, I want to add.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. I apologize on jumping ahead here, so we will jump ahead then to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we'll bring the items up on the screen, is the repeal of the ordinance on the sale of hemp-derived THC food and beverages, the introduction of an ordinance for the request of Vesta LLC to rezone 1030 East Southview Drive, the introduction of an ordinance for the request of the city of Marshall to rezone various London Road properties from B1 Limited District to an R11 family resident district to an R4 higher density multiple family resident district, consider the request of Southwest Minnesota State University for the Homecoming Parade, which will be Saturday, October 14, 2023, consider the approval of temporary on-sale liquor license for Visit Marshall for Prairie Jam that will be held in September, and finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Five.
Number five. Any other item? If not, I would entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So agenda item number five is the introduction of the ordinance for the request of the city of Marshall to rezone various London Road properties from a B1 limited district to an R11 family resident district to an R4 higher density multiple family district. Again, the action here is the introduction of the ordinance. Couple people asked for this to be removed from the consent agenda, so I'll jump right to Jason Anderson, and you can maybe make some comments about what this is, and also the introduction and the recommendation from the planning commission. And then Craig and Jim, you can ask the questions that you have, as well as anyone else.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So as you mentioned, this is an introduction for a rezone. City staff was requested to consider the rezone here. We had an application for the property. I think we have a map up there. Yeah, west of London Road is identified on that map. You see that crosshatched area over that blue zone and just into the red. That's the area to be rezoned. Originally, the proposal was to rezone all the way over to London Road. At the planning commission, we did have a public hearing. There was good input from the residents in the neighborhood to the east. After lots of input and discussion, it was determined that the rezone would be a little bit further away. We would leave a single-family strip along London Road and then propose the rezone for higher-density residential just to the west. Lauren Deitz, our EDA director, has an item on the agenda coming up under new business where they'll be discussing a possible development in this area. It's a residential housing development for both senior housing and then regular housing, I guess. That project, in order for that project to go forward, they would need the rezone, so that's why we had brought it forward. Is that a good explanation at this time, Mayor?
Could you also, if the map was still up, could you also, for the audience, point out Paris Road?
Sure. Thanks. So as part of this project, it is being discussed that Paris Road would be extended over to Channel Parkway, and this proposed development would take access off of Paris Road. So this is a preliminary step to rezone the property and make it feasible from a land use perspective to complete the project. It's my understanding that the developer is seeking some financing through the state of Minnesota, and upon successful financing of the project, we would start to work with them towards the development and making it happen.
Council members, Schaefer and then Lozinski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Jason. Yeah, just a couple of points, and I appreciate the question about access, whether it would be directly onto London Road or if it would be, you know, an extension of a street and with an option for ingress egress onto Channel Parkway. So I appreciate that. And then the other point that I wanted to make clear is that in the conver, excuse me, in the conversation with constituents, the other question was, is will there be additional chance for input? And as I understand it, the public input, the public hearing portion is satisfied at the planning commission meeting. So not that their input and their letters to us aren't recognized, the forum was conducted at the, at the public hearing at the planning commission. So thank you for that.
Jim?
I had the same concerns as Craig. The only question, I have another question, that strip of R1 that's left along there, is that going to stay as ownership with the city of Marshall, or is the developer buying that land?
So right now, at this point in time, all of that property is owned by, I believe it's the city of Marshall.
Yes.
Being transferred to the EDA. So at this point in time, it's just a zoning action over that parcel, the part of the parcel that's identified with the crosshatching. When it comes time to do development, the whole property would need to be platted, subdivided, and sold in pieces.
So that's where the R1 zoning would be, would be sold off with the property, so they would, which is fine.
It would likely not. I think later on the council agenda, you'll be looking over a pre-development agreement. I believe the property that would be discussed would be back to the west. The single-family parcels would not be sold at this point in time unless something develops going forward.
Then the second question is, are they large enough to develop a house on? As you hatch out half those lots, now we've really shrunk the size of those lots, which shrinks the size of the house. So does it make sense to leave an R1 lot that is not buildable?
So city staff would ensure that during the plating process that what is left are developable parcels, and will ensure that whatever is sold and what is rezoned and left is R1. What's left as R1 is a large enough depth to create adequate single-family lots. So it'll be up to city staff to ensure that what we finish here is, leaves us with buildable parcels.
Thank you.
Amanda? At Planning Commission, at the public hearing, there was concern about, originally the request was to zone that whole piece, R4, and I think that was the largest concern from the public, was keeping that strip of R1, and so I hope that will help alleviate some of that concern. They were concerned about traffic, and now seeing that London Road connecting to Channel Parkway, I think helps a lot, too. We were without that information in the public hearing, so hopefully that alleviates a lot of the concern.
Paris Road.
Paris Road to Channel Parkway. Sorry, yeah, before we thought it was south, so just thoughts.
And part of my drive on the R1 is, if we leave those as R1 houses and the developer knows that, that creates a good buffer for the homeowners who are there. If a developer comes in and builds single-family homes, that creates a buffer to the existing people, and it's a good transition from R4 to R1. I mean, that is how, lotting transition, I can't think of the right word, but that's how transitions, so.
Other questions that council has? The action requested is the introduction of the ordinance.
I move the introduction of the ordinance.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number nine, the request for interim use permit for a storage container in a B3 general business district. The location is 1300 Susan Drive. Jason? Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a request for an interim use permit to have a storage container in a B3 district at 1300 Susan Drive, as you had indicated. The property owner, James and Patricia Skews, brought this forward. They've got a shipping container on the property. You can see it on the drawing, on the screen. Ordinance does require a screening between the public right-of-way and the neighboring lots for the shipping container, so the blue line identified on there would be what staff suggested for an acceptable screen, I guess, a fence that would block that container from the neighboring parcel and from the right-of-way. You do have that permit in the packet for your consideration. Planning commission heard this on June 14th, and a public hearing was conducted, and all voted in favor to bring this forward to you.
Amanda, any additional comments from the planning commission?
No, there were no concerns about this particular storage unit.
Questions that the council has?
Is this container sitting there right now?
Yes.
It is, that's it?
Yes.
So did, I guess my question is, was this a complaint driven? I'm just curious.
So a while back, staff was essentially directed to take a look at all the shipping containers around our community, so that's what we did. We sent notices and letters and started a process of communicating with all the property owners, and this is, there's maybe a few remaining.
All right, no, it's good. That's, it's just curious that, so if you have a shipping container, just make sure you get in compliance. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
Second.
And by Craig, to approve the interim use permit for a storage container in the B3 general business district at this location. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 12, the pre-development agreement for affordable family apartment complex and senior independent living complex. This is the project that was referred to earlier, and I will call on Lauren Deitz, Economic Development Director for the city of Marshall, to present this agenda item. Lauren?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to have Stephen grab something for me quick, but I'm here tonight to talk about a housing development project that we've been working on here for a few months. A couple months back, the EDA was approached by tapestry companies for an opportunity to put together a housing project that would help address some of our especially affordable housing needs, as well as senior housing needs. And this project really came from the fact that the legislature has a lot of funding for housing projects this year in the billions, which we're seeing developers really take advantage of. So an overview of the project. What we're looking to do is build 60-unit affordable housing, family, I should mention family, apartment complex. And the reason that that is important is there's going to be some larger units. We know that we have some families in need of more than a one and two bedroom that they can afford. So this property will actually have 12 one-bedroom, 32 two-bedrooms, 12 three-bedrooms, and six four-bedroom apartments. And in addition, we're looking at a 65-unit affordable senior independent living complex, which is, as we'll get farther into our presentation, a large need in our community based on our most recent housing study. Another point to mention is that there will be accessible units within the facility for those with some different challenges that Tim can talk about a little bit more. There's also going to be 124 parking stalls for the affordable, a playground, a walking path, and then an additional 82 parking stalls for the senior. So having plenty of parking with the project as well. So with us tonight, sorry, I should mention, the affordable family apartment is a roughly $22 million project, and then the senior is an $18 million project, closer to 19. So very large developments and something that locally would be hard for us to take on by ourselves, so appreciative that a developer is ready to come in and help us with these needs. So with us, I have Tim. He is an executive vice president for the tapestry companies, and I'm just going to let him introduce himself and his company a little bit.
Thank you, Lauren, Mayor, council members. Our company Tapestry, we also have a sister company, LaSalle, so it's kind of Tapestry LaSalle. But we've been in the business of developing, managing, operating housing for 40-plus years. We've done a lot of housing with all types of financing, government programs, et cetera, so this is well within our comfort zone. We actually sat last winter, kind of doing some strategic planning, talking with Maxfield Research Group, who I believe did a study for the city, and in that conversation came, you know, the state of Minnesota has a lot of money to do affordable housing, so there's a lot of interest in that. And Mary Boujot, the president, said, you know, guys, everybody's looking at the metro, and we're a metro-based company. So we're like, yeah, that's true, but nobody's looking outstate where the need is way underserved. So we sat out and looked at the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, said, okay, what communities haven't had affordable housing? Marshall and our research hasn't had any in decades, what we've been able to tell. And for a town of 25,000, that just jumped off the page. We're like, okay, this is something we should look at. As Lauren mentioned, reached out and asked if the city saw that same vision, and is there any areas or sites that we should look at? It works particularly well to work with a city-owned property because the process with Minnesota Housing Finance from application to award to actually construction open is, you know, a year and a half or more. Most private land... Most private landowners have a hard time tying up their property for that long. So, luckily, we were able to find the site that we're talking about here. The financing, as Lauren mentioned, is an application we'll put in for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. That goes in on July 13th. They will award projects typically around December. So, you don't know if and when or where. It's kind of wait and see if they do. They have a point scoring system where they kind of rank, you know, what they're looking for. We've done everything our, we could with a consultant to try to achieve, you know, the maximum points to, to be awarded. So, if we're, if we are selected for one or both, then basically we're awarded debt financing as well as the ability to go sell tax credits. Usually that's investors or large companies. That provides a lot of equity, so it's a lower leveraged project, means we can offer lower rents. We're looking at rents in both senior and the family, at people whose income is below 50% of the area median income, some units are even at 30% or less. As Lauren mentioned, in the family as well as the senior, the MHFA likes to have some units set aside where we work with local agencies to help folks who need help with either disabilities or there's near homeless or things like that, where we get a chance to give them a, a nice home environment and help them sort of rebuild their lives. So, we've incorporated all those things into our, into our project. So, we're excited about the opportunity to be in Marshall, think there's a huge need for what we're doing. Our plan isn't just a, a one-year and, and then we're on to something else. We're looking at this as a multi-year program over the state of Minnesota. And I say that because there's a probability we'll submit for both the senior and the family. We may get one, we'd like to get both. They may tell us, come back next year. If that's the case, we'll be back next year and make the application all over again. So, it's more of a, it's more of a commitment on our end than just a one-time, hi, how are you? And then, you know, we're gone. So, and then, Lauren, if you want.
So, as Tim mentioned, the program we're looking at is the housing tax credit program. Just a, a brief description on that. And then there's two different options there, a 9% and 4%. And I think you're applying at both levels.
Yep.
So, to give us a little bit more flexibility in potentially getting our project selected. So, I wanted to bring up this map. I know we're not necessarily talking about the rezone tonight, but I wanted to show the council the proposed layout. So, this kind of brings it all together. The blue area is what is being proposed for the housing project. As you can see, the access for the project is coming off of that Paris Road extension to the north there. It also gives us another 2.6 acre development lot for future, which could be another housing project or by conditional use could be a commercial project as well. And then you'll see that buffer strip of single-family residential. You'll see the square footage placed there. I know, Jim, you mentioned the size of those lots. So, at this time, the EDA would retain those lots for single-family development in the future. I think we have some flexibility as we go through and get this all platted to make sure that that all meets the need of the community. But we were just talking with Tim earlier, we think that this actually, this nice buffer will be good for the project as well, kind of sets it off by itself there. And, and Tim and his team have agreed to do the Paris Road extension for us with some assistance from the city, which we'll talk about as we move through. So, as I mentioned, Tim and his team would look to do that Paris Road extension, but the city would propose, or the EDA, I should say, would propose that we use our 500 impul TIF, which we, we, last year, we were able to deregulate those so that we can use them for more projects and we only have two years to use them. So, we thought this was a great opportunity to use those 500,000s, 500,000 towards the street project to help Tim and his team, because it's roughly about a million-dollar project based on our estimates, to get that street added into this project. We would also like to provide the land for $1. Tim and his team will be having a third-party appraisal completed on the site to make sure that we're, we're coming to a good number on what the value of that land would be. One piece to mention, as Tim said, there is an application process and part of that is city support scoring. So, the more points or the more support towards the project the city shows, that actually increases their overall points so that it, it shows that the city wants the project and will hopefully help in the selection process and, and move us up in the ranks a little bit as we work through it. And then I just wanted to lay out, so as Tim mentioned, the units will all be at 50% or lower, below the AMI. So, when we look at our housing study, how it's defined is that 50% and below is a deep subsidy, just for everybody's reference. So, our current need, and as mentioned, we haven't put any online in quite some time, is 128 deep subsidy apartment units. And then in addition, we have a need for 523 total senior housing, but within that 208 shallow or deep subsidy apartments. So, this really meets a need that's, it's really difficult to bring this many affordable housing units online and especially with a developer who has a good reputation and has several projects that they've done. If you check out their website, you can see some of the work that they've done. They've also done a lot of repurposing projects, so a nice development team to work with. But just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that this is needed within our housing study and it's a need that we have not addressed in the last two years. So, with that, I can open it up for questions. The ask tonight is for the council to consider approving a pre-development agreement that shows support towards the project for the application to Minnesota housing.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Questions? If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the pre-development agreement.
I move approval of the pre-development agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
And we'll talk about this, Amanda and I, when we talk about our EDA meeting, but this fits perfectly with what the area, the mission and the vision of that area is. So, I think this is a great project to think, Tim, your company realized quintessentially the importance of this and the lack of support in rural America for these kind of things. And yeah, it's probably out here more than it is in the city, so I think it's a good idea. You know, the only concern that I would have going forward is like any multifamily residential area where there's income subsidies, you build it, it looks great, let's keep it great.
Right. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11 is the presentation of the 2022 City of Marshall audit. The auditors are online. I will ask our director of administrative services, EJ Moberg, to not only introduce this topic, but also introduce the auditors. EJ?
Thank you. Yes, online is one of the partners from Bergen KDV, who completed the 2022 audit. I'll let Nancy introduce herself to, to get into it and turn it over to her.
Okay, very good. Thank you, EJ. Nancy?
Thank you, EJ. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and administration. Thank you for giving me some time to go over the results of our audit for the year ended December 31st, 2022. So, to start out, I'd like to talk about all the components of the audit. And first and foremost, our opinion. We include our opinion letter in the front of the financial statement document and we're issuing an unmodified opinion again this year, which is the best that we as your auditors are able to offer. And it is an indication that everything in those financial statements is fairly stated in all material respects based on the results of our audit. So, it is a clean opinion, if you will. Then we issue a report in accordance with government auditing standards and these standards require us to look closer at internal control and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts and grants. And based on our work in accordance with those standards, we had no findings. And I do want to point out that's a very rare occurrence, so congratulations to the city of Marshall for achieving that. And then the last official letter that we issue on compliance has to do with Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor on an annual basis issues a checklist that covers seven broad categories of legal compliance. And we complete that checklist and based on that, we had no findings there as well. Then we have in our communication letter, section titled Required Communication. So, these are things that our audit standards require that we put in writing to you as the governing body for the city of Marshall. And it discusses responsibilities, it discusses the standards that we follow and all of those types of things. It also would be our tool if we had any disagreements with managements or difficulties that we encountered or anything significant that was uncovered during the course of the audit and happy to report that nothing in that section strays from our standard language, so nothing to discuss further. And then we have financial analysis, which I will cover tonight. And in the back of that communication letter, if you are looking for something to read that's light and exciting, there are some new GASB standards, a section titled Emerging Issues. So, we have neat, three new standards in the upcoming years that we'll be implementing, so they're there for your reading pleasure. Moving then to the financial analysis, we have several charts and graphs to take a look at the general fund and the activity of the general fund over the last five years. And we're really going to key in tonight on the differences between '21 and '22. So, what you see here is our chart that shows your cash and investments and the fund balance for the last five years. The top portion is your cash and investment balance and then the greenish bottom portion is that fund balance. So, you can see they have mirrored each other until 2022, where your fund balance took a decrease and your cash and investment balance stayed similar. And what happened there is the ARPA funds that you've received over the last couple of years are in your cash balance, but they are not yet in that fund balance. They haven't been spent, so they're in an unearned revenue code. So, that is creating most of the difference between your cash and fund balance. When we look at your fund balance level at the end of the year, you have set a policy of five months of next year's budgeted expenditures and at the end of the year, you're at 43.9%, which is just under that five months. So, very close to the fund balance minimum that you have set for the city. The next chart takes a look very high level at the revenues and expenditures and the change in that fund balance year over year. So, when we look at '22, you can see that revenues are up, expenditures were up, and we'll dig into the details of those changes in future slides. You did have net transfers in of 252,000 and an overall decrease in your fund balance in the general fund that we saw on the previous page. So, when we look at that in a graphical format, you'll see an overall upward trend in your revenues and expenditures in the general fund with the increase in expenditures outpacing that increase in revenues for the last three years. And again, we'll dig into the details of those revenues and expenditures in these next slides. So, starting with the revenues, revenues were up about 6.5% in 2022 and that came primarily in two areas. The first one being charges for services. You had additional engineering fees collected that are included in that category. And then there was also an increase in your taxes, which is the green portion and the largest portion of your revenue, making up almost 45% of the total for the year. And that category increased with an increase in the levy and also an increase with franchise fees collected that are included in that tax category. On the expenditure side of things, the increase there did outpace the increase in revenues and expenditures increased about 8.4%. And that came across almost all of your categories. So, when we look at general government, which is the top portion, that increased about 442,000 and had to do with increased professional services and a community center personnel costs included there. Right below that is your public safety category, which does make up the largest portion of your expenditures, which is very typical for cities in Minnesota, making up about 32% of the total. That area increased about 327,000 with an increase in salaries and benefits and the implementation of the wage study that you completed. Right below that, you see the public works category. That was up about 236,000 related to street repair and maintenance and then also some airport professional services that were encountered in 2022. And then finally, below that, the last one that we're going to talk about is your cultural and recreation category, up about 250,000, had to do with some repairs and maintenance and also an increase in salaries and benefits. When we take a look at those revenues and expenditures and we compare them to the budget, that's what you see in this charge. So, you had enacted an original budget and a final budget that anticipated an overall decrease in the fund balance. The fund balance did go down by a bit more than what you were anticipating. And we can look at the variance column, which is on the far right. So, when we look at your revenues, total revenues were about $431,000 under budget, which is 3.1%. So, not a significant variance. And it came in three categories most primarily. So, first of all, if you look at your intergovernmental, those were under budget, about 465,000 related to lower federal funding. So, those ARPA funds that were included in the budget were not spent, so the revenue was not recognized in 2022. And then also, if you look at the investment earnings line, so you had a small budget anticipated there, you do see an actual decrease in that category. And that has to do with the market conditions. At the end of the year, governments are required to adjust the market value of investments at year end. So, what you're seeing there is an unrealized loss. With those investments are held to maturity, they'll get back up to par and that won't become a realized loss. But at the end of the year, that's where the market was. So, you see a, a significant under budget related to investment earnings. And then offsetting both of those under budgets a bit is your over budget in taxes and that had to do, again, with those franchise fees being more than what you had anticipated. When we look at, oh, the expenditures, those were under budget about 1.3%, so really very, very close to what you had anticipated. Two categories contributing to the variance, first of all, your general government and that's the offset to the under budget in the intergovernmental revenues. So, you had planned some spending of ARPA funds that didn't occur in 2022, so that's where the under budget comes in there. And then public safety, a bit over budget related to salaries and benefits in that category. Now, we can move to the next slide. So, moving on then to your enterprise funds, we do have charts that show your operating revenues, operating expenses and then operating income two ways, one with depreciation included and one without. And I think it's important to note that depreciation is a non-cash expense, but it is an operating expense of these funds because the assets that they are using are being used up over their useful lives. So, there's an annual expense related to that. Unfortunately, the wastewater treatment operations, you are covering all of that depreciation expense. And when we look at change year over year, revenues were virtually flat, increasing just 1.8% and expenses actually down 12.8%. You had higher project costs and supplies in 2021 versus 2022. The next slide takes a look at the cash and the restricted and unrestricted net position for this fund. So, this is the equity of the wastewater treatment fund and you can see you overall had a decrease in both of those for 2022 and that had to do with some wastewater treatment upgrades that occurred that affected both the cash and the unrestricted and restricted net position, moving into the investment in capital assets. And then your liquor store fund, you've had three great years in this fund, starting with the highest point in 2020 and then maintaining those gross profits for '21 and '22. Your gross profit actually increased in 2022 and reached a 28.4% high for the year. I do know that for 2021, averages for liquor stores across the state of Minnesota was 26.5%. We don't have 2022 numbers yet, but I would anticipate it won't go up as much as yours did. So, you were at 28.4%, so above that state average. You do see an increase in the operating expenses in this fund and that had a lot to do with the allocation of that pension expense. So, that liability is allocated over all participants and the liquor store does have significant salary expenditures, so that fund did receive a, a large portion of that pension expense for the year. Operating income, very, very similar to 2021. And when we look at the position of this fund on the following slide, you can see the overall positive when we look from 2018 to 2022. So, you've had an overall increase based on the positive operations that we saw on the previous page. And then we have the surface water management fund and this is the last enterprise fund that the city has. So, when we look at this, your operating revenues in this fund also increased by 1.8%, so virtually flat from the previous year. You did have more significant increase in the operating expenses. Those were up about 24.6%. Some of that was increased depreciation based on some assets that have been put online in previous years. And then you also had some non-capital project costs included in 2022. So, for 2022, you are not covering all of the depreciation in this fund and that's the first time that that has occurred in the five years that we're looking at. And you did cover about 66% of the depreciation. So, something to keep an eye on and be aware of when you're looking at future rates for that fund. And then if we look at the position of that fund, you can see the decrease overall in 2022, but both balances still very healthy and positive at year end. The next couple of slides take a look at the city of Marshall and then statewide averages on a per capita basis for both. on a per capita basis for both revenues on this slide and then expenses on the following slide. So when we look at that, we've highlighted 21 and the population that matches the city of Marshall in green. We don't have 2022 comparisons yet, but you can see that you are traditionally above statewide averages in revenue, coming in a couple of categories, primarily property taxes, intergovernmental revenues, and then also the other category. And that has to do with the taxes that you levy, the LDA that you receive, and then also the payments that you receive in lieu of taxes from the Marshall Miniaturities. So that's what's going on there. And then if we look at expenditures, you have revenues in excess of the average, so you have expenditures in excess of the average, which makes sense. You're going to spend what you receive. Here, a couple of things that jump out, parks and recreation being an area that you're spending more money on, which I think is a positive for the residents of Marshall. And then debt also being significantly higher than state averages for cities of your size. And that is the information I wanted to go over this evening. Happy to take any questions or dig into anything in more detail if you would like.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. EJ, any final summary statements you have?
Just very pleased that the audit had no findings. Like she said, it's pretty rare, so it's a good pat on the back for our staff, I feel. So good job to Carla, the finance director, and others throughout the city.
Thank you, EJ. Questions?
I got a couple of questions. Right now, ARPA funds are kind of throwing a skew into your audit as you do this with unexpended ARPA funds or ARPA funds that have been spent, if I understand that correctly?
Right, because the ARPA funds have not been spent, so they're in an unearned category. So they're in cash. You have them, they're available, and they're for your future spending.
And then slide 16, can we go back to slide 16? On the property taxes, the average, if I read this correctly, the average is $529 per citizen, and Marshall's paying 637? Is that what those numbers mean?
Yes, 737.
737, so we're $208 over average from our size, if I read that correctly.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Just a comment that it was very well explained for some of us that are a little more green. Thank you.
Very nice presentation.
You're welcome.
The council does have the full audit report was emailed by Carla today, I believe. So there's the opportunity to keep that for reference as we not only review the past performance, but as we look forward. That I would entertain a motion to accept the audit report.
So moved.
Second.
motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Nancy, for your audit services.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda Number 12. This is the project with the Batum and this overlays of various city streets and the request for additional paving at the wastewater facility. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Included in our city overlay project this year was numerous wastewater sites set to receive a millon overlay. You see two of them located on the map at the wastewater treatment facility outlined in blue there. Those areas are already included in the project. In addition to those areas, we're completing some overlay at the Minnesota 23 lift around there and around the main lift by Justice Park. So those areas are already included in the project. Due to favorable bid pricing, wastewater had significantly more money included in their CIP for resurfacing this year. With that, Scott Trudson and his team at the wastewater facility has approached us about the areas outlined in red on the map. These are areas that they'd like to see also paved. The furthest east or right side of the page, that odd-shaped area is a truck turnaround area that's on a grate, and apparently the gravel continuously washes out, and they'd like to pave that area. And then the other area alongside the equalization basin is a higher traffic area that they'd like to pave as well, and I think they might have a little erosion issue there, too. But with the advantageous bid prices, if you add up our estimated cost for the work that's already included in the project, and this additional cost, we're at $86,000, little over $86,000 when they had $149,000 in the budget. So staff would request to include these into the project. The contractors already indicated they would honor the bid pricing in these areas if our staff prepared the areas for paving, which the wastewater team is prepared to do. I can answer any questions if you have them, and Scott Trudson, our facility superintendent, is here as well.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason or Scott? If not, is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Number 13, the authorize staff to draft the final lease agreement with the Adult Basic Education, ABE program effective August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2024. And just a note for the council, councilperson Seymour Leskey, due to a conflict of interest, can't participate in either the vote or the discussion on this item. So with that, I'll turn to City Administrator Sharon Hansen.
Yes, we did get a request from Adult Basic Education Program for potential to lease space, and they did inquire with another property in our community, maybe others, and were not successful in finding office relocation opportunities. So they approached the city, and although it's not a direct department under Community Services, we've been partnering with Adult Basic Education for quite some time. It is a program that is technically overseen by the Marshall School District, and we feel it is somewhat of a community partner for the city that we would like to assist with. So we did show them some office location. It would be the current EDA office. We chose that location just because of the entrance exit capabilities for ABE clients and that we can easily relocate the current EDA director for a short period of time. In addition, there's a small meeting space across from that that works well to serve the clients of ABE. We did include in the council packet a draft final lease agreement. We did have, it's a draft final, draft lease agreement. We did have our city attorney look at the terms and did some revisions to the lease agreement, and we just want to have a little leeway to finalize it. Our main intent to bring this forward to council tonight is to seek your permission to continue the discussions. I know we're coming up around August 1st. There's been some recent discussions about maybe upping it from August 1st to the last week in July, which I believe we could accommodate if the council wishes us to pursue this. So we think this is a good partnership that we'd like to help them with in this one-year interim. And I failed to maybe mention, SMSU is expected to complete their construction project by July 31st of 2024. And hopefully that works well with what we're looking at doing here as an addition. So I will pause and see if there's any questions and if you're willing to authorize staff to proceed with drafting of a final lease agreement.
Questions?
What floor is this on?
This is just on the second floor of City Hall here, so.
And then where will EDA go?
There's actually the corner office up to the left there that has a desk in it. It's used sometimes by our city attorney. It's been used by some interns in the past, but we feel that that might be a good location to relocate, Lauren.
Okay.
And then she'd also still have access to when she meets with clients.
Right, to conference areas. I would like to add to this. I think when we remodeled City Hall, this was part of the vision when we did this, that we can have the ability to help out other organizations. You know, when we turned the old fire station, the fire hall, which is right here, we're sitting in it, into this space, this was part of that vision of making this a good, usable public space. I think this is a great use of that public space for an organization like this, and I think that's in the vision of the remodeled City Hall.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to authorize the staff to move to the final lease agreement with ABE?
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion passes, and we note one abstention. Okay, we'll move then to Scott, hang around, I'll call on you later. It won't be long. The Agenda Number 14 is consider appointments to various boards and commissions and authorities earlier this evening. We interviewed an applicant for the Public Housing Commission, and based on that application, I would recommend that Jennifer Katz be appointed to the Public Housing Commission for a term that will expire May 31st, 2025. Offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. The, we'll note, there was one abstention. We'll move then to Agenda Number 15, Commission Board Liaison Report. Craig?
Mine have not met. We will meet, the equipment committee will meet tomorrow, and actually, our joint law enforcement center will be meeting on Thursday. So not real clear on the agenda on that, but we haven't met for a while, and so it's probably high time that we meet, and I'm sure we'll have things to report back.
Thank you. Steve?
So Adult Community Center did not meet, Cable Commission has not met, EDA, I'll split it with Amanda here, but we met and had good discussion. We had board elections, so Tony Schatzko remains president, Ben Blume is vice president. UCAP proposal, there are five lots that they were negotiating. If you want to pull those up on the thing that, I don't know if you can see them there. Can you see them on that screen?
No.
No, can't see them on there.
Is that there?
Yeah, it was in the other proposal, but they're right by the railroad track, and so they're negotiating with somebody who can, is offering that. The other thing was talking about this project that we had, and there was a lot of good, oh, yeah, there you go. So, where is it?
Or is it right up here?
Yeah, right at the end of Vienna Circle. I don't think, is Warsaw there? Because it was Warsaw.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, because there was a, maybe, there was railroad tracks real close to it somewhere, wherever the railroad tracks are.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the tracks, so it was down here at Vienna Circle. So these five right there, right in there. So that's where they're negotiating. There was discussion about what would be the minimum that the EDA should take for it, and so they're in the negotiations for that. The final decision that we had was the project that Tim Tremble presented with that development for the multi-housing, multifamily housing and senior housing, and we all discussed, and a lot of good questions were had, especially on that private, single-family buffer. There was a lot of public input in the public hearing for that, and this is what came out. So hopefully, the funding gets put by. It's not a guarantee. The state has a lot of applicants, and like Lauren said, city help gives you some points, but there's no guarantee. So hopefully, we get that, because that would be a great and very well-needed project in Marshall. And that's it on my end.
Thank you, Steve. Amanda?
Yeah, there was a lot at the EDA meeting. I'll just touch on the Main Street Revitalization Grant. All of the applications were received, there were over 30 of them, and they were reviewed on June 22nd, so we'll hear more about that at our next meeting, I can imagine. Planning Commission, as far as that goes, we've kind of discussed already here tonight, the interim use for the storage container and the map amendment to London Road, and then also a map amendment, I assume, that will be coming for the area across from Hyvee, where Family Dollar and Brow that area, a rezone there, just to make it more fitting.
Okay, very good. As far as mine, the Regional Development Commission Board met last Thursday. I was unable to attend because that conflicted with the League of Minnesota Cities' annual meeting that was held right at the same time. John? See?
No updates.
Jim?
Very quiet on the side, no updates.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, I think it's your turn to start on your end.
Just thankful it rained out this weekend.
See?
And nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wonder if everybody knows that our mayor received the CC Ludwig Award from the League of Minnesota Cities. That is the highest award given to elected officials. So there will be a presentation, I think, in the future here at council, but Bob's pretty humble about this, but this is a big deal. And so I think we all owe Bob a round of applause for. So, pretty awesome. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. And then just one other note, I did receive a call from a concerned citizen, and I've heard this from more than just this caller, just in passing, but this citizen actually took the time to call and discuss, concern about the safety of the alley behind the post office where the drop boxes are. And the best I can concur, or the best that I could give is that I concur that it's not the best of a situation, but the concern was why didn't we plan ahead and deal with the alley before we did the street? We said we'd love to, but the timing didn't allow that, so we're basically working with what we have. And the placement of the boxes is not our decision, it belongs to the post office, and that we were able to fix part of the issue on the Third Street end of the degree of slope on the approach, and so we were able to flatten that a little bit. And then I think I'm sure in the future, we'll be working with the adjacent property owners on upgrading the alley and hopefully mitigating some of the other concerns, but basically, yeah, no contest. It's not, it's not the best of a situation, and especially now during construction. So hopefully, everybody can be patient and please take the extra time to be safe when you're in there. It's kind of a weird traffic movement and stuff, so, but I did want to acknowledge that and that there were concerns, that one call was, was direct, but there's been other conversations that I've had, too. So it is duly noted, and I think that's all I have.
And Craig, I think we should take note that the post office did not give us warning that they're going to move, they just moved the mailboxes one day.
And I mean, that's their prerogative. It was a discussion that we had about, yeah, you know, I think our engineering had a conversation, what are your plans? And, you know, they're thinking about moving, and we're like, okay, well, yeah, we need to know that. For Thursday, the next day, they were gone.
They were gone, yeah. So not to pick on the postal service, but they did not work with the city a whole lot on that.
So the, and that's well said, both of you, and that is a post office decision, and I think there's widespread agreement that it's a terrible situation right now.
It doesn't work well right now.
Where the two boxes are at, and, I mean, I don't know of any reason why they have to be on their parking lot. They could be somewhere else. It doesn't have to be on right at their adjacent to the post office.
Yeah, I think, I think there's definitely going to be conversations for a better solution to that, and it's just, you know, but I definitely wanted to make note of that. It was, it was a very valid complaint, a very valid concern.
And I believe Third Street's opening, and she can cross Third Street to College. I was dropped off the mail the other morning and noticed that, because I can't make the turn with my work truck. It's, it's a humdinger.
Jason, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. You're correct, Councilman, it is open to cross it, across Third Street now. It is open to cross it, across Third Street now, which does help. And we did flatten that driveway entrance on that Third Street.
Your Mustang might fit now, James.
It's much better than it was. I would just point out that the current special assessment policy has alleys as 100% assessed to the adjacent property owners. So that also puts the city in the interesting position of, are you going to force a 100% assessed project onto the property owners? Or are they going to ask for the improvement? So that's something that we need to grapple with as well in this area.
Right.
Especially the property owner that had nothing to do with the increased traffic because of those boxes, so.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be an interesting dynamic to figure this out. But I, I just, yeah.
And thank you, Greg, for your earlier comments. Steve?
I have nothing.
Amanda?
Nothing.
The, I have a couple of things. The reason I wanted Scott to stick around, did you want to make any comments about the... You had some positive communication on the permit review, or you want to save that for a later meeting? Things are going well, anyway, but...
Yeah, I can make a few comments.
Sure. So just to, you know, again, I apologize for having you speak off the cuff here. But maybe to set him up a little bit, the council recalls, there's a permit renewal. There was a number of questions. The city had a response like, you know, take a look at this or maybe consider this. And so earlier this week, you and we received a response on that. So maybe we'll make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we've been working with Bolton Mink and internally at staff and Jason. We've been working with Ashley Wall at the MPC. She's been very good to work with about trying to address the issues in the permit that is, our permit's been expired for a while, so now it's time to renew it. But there are items in there that are going to be hard to treat, like sulfates. That's something that there isn't a way really to treat in wastewater yet. So we're working on getting a schedule of compliance on that. Also with our chlorides, we're not quite there. We're a lot better than we were. So we're looking at, we've applied for variance on that. Of course, applying for it doesn't mean you're going to get it. But we're, we're hopeful that we can. And also with the phosphorus. Phosphorus limits are going to get tighter for us. And one of the main things for us to reach the phosphorus limit is our effluent filters date back to 2002. And they were never designed to remove the finer particulates that the phosphorus hides in, so to speak. So that's something that we're looking at. We'll have to do a facility plan. And that's something down the road we'll have to address. But it sounds like they're going to give us a 10-year scheduled compliance on the phosphorus too. So I'll probably be standing up here eventually, next few years, too, talking about this, so.
So it was really about as good of a response as you could have...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's still, I guess the ball is in the MPC's court right now. We'll get a response back. We just sent it two days ago, so.
Good.
See where it goes. But I'm positive on it, so.
Thank you, Scott, for your work.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
The other-
This is Ashley Wall. We did, we did win the Permit Rider Lotto when Ashley got assigned to our permit.
So the, a couple of other things, you know, I did mention last week was the League of Minnesota Cities' annual meeting. Sharon Hanson was elected to the Board of Directors, which is a big deal for the-
Coach.
And the city marshal, so let's give her a round. And then finally, this is another piece of pretty good news. Council recalls that there's been application for what's called a RACE grant. And I'll let Jason explain the details of what the acronym RACE stands for. But the, but anyway, it's a federal grant that Minnesota Department of Transportation submitted on behalf of the project, the 2025 project. So we were contacted late last week by both Senator Klobuchar's office as well as Senator Smith's office that it has been approved to be awarded. This is $15.4 million, which will go a long ways to covering not only many of our local costs, but also helps MinDOT out with the investment that they're making. So Jason, if you want to provide any other details. Anyway, RACE grant application was submitted. It has been approved.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Great news. I did look it up really quick. RACE, Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. That's what that stands for. It's a big deal, you know. I think the project is up to, probably upwards of $25 million plus right now on the total price tag. MinDOT obviously has some funds in the project. We've got a lot of funds in the project. And this grant will help us both out. Covers a lot of costs. The only costs that are ineligible likely are the water and sewer costs. Our water and sewer utilities will still have to pony up for, for those costs on the project. But our storm sewer costs should be covered, at least in part, by this grant. And a lot of our participating street costs should be covered in part by this grant. When you put this combined with the, what it was, 832,000 of federal grants that we got through the MinDOT ATP a couple of years back, that's now up to 1.1 or 2. They've increased that amount with bill funds. So we're, you, you take those funds with the RACE grant. It really helps the city marshal out because MinDOT has generously agreed to include us very, very fairly in this situation. So MinDOT did a lot of the work. City staff partnered a little bit on the, on the grant application. But kudos to MinDOT for including us in this. And it's, it's good for everybody.
Thank you, Jason. Again, if there's, there'll probably be more to come on, certainly more to come on that project. But this is very good news. And then the final thing that I would bring up this evening is that this is the season of a lot of outdoor events. The Independence Park is really the focus of many of those events, including the, the Pride event that was on June 12th, the June 19th celebration that was on June 19th. And then upcoming, the Independence Park, Fourth of July, Independence Day at Independence Park. So all these things happen because the park is available. It's well-maintained. And looking forward to the Fourth of July celebration. It's because of our city staff does some work to be sure that it's an organized event. And, and all those things make the community better. So with that, I'll move along then to staff reports and start with Sharon.
Yes. Just want to update a little bit on the Aquatic Center. We did get some, some new financial numbers for the project. And I know when David Locke was here last time, he was still concerned about the construction cost being around $19 million. So what we now have before us is some alternates to lower it to 18.3. That was the direction that we gave the architectural engineering firm because I would sense from the council that that's what they wanted to stick with. And we'll work with EJ and Baker Tilly and our bond consultant a little bit on maneuvering through issuance costs and interests and what that may mean for the final bonding. If we get approval in November, there might be some additional leeway, not just 18.3. But at this point, that's kind of what we're looking at. So they're going to come, update the council on July 25th, talk about those numbers and some final design items, too. They're going to really start that, that, those details on that, on the project in order for us to bid it out in, in 2024, early 2024, which would be our goal if we get approval. I also want to state that I had a really good discussion with Brian Stuckey. I know the last time he was here, he, I would think, was pretty vocal about 50-meter pool. And, you know, he just really explained himself that, you know, this is maybe once in a lifetime. He knows it's going to be a 50-year project. He just wants to make sure that we're doing it right. He understands the costs. He, he understands those challenges. And we talked a lot about programming as well, maybe greater utilization by the swim team. And, and I think we can make that happen. And we've talked about YMCA potentially using some of this Aquatic Center, too, which they currently, you know, don't do so much. So I know a number of you have gotten emails, maybe not recently, but previously from, I think it was more swim team constituents. But I did too. And I think I probably will, I probably will respond to them. I just haven't yet. We talked a little bit more about swimming lessons and the different areas for that. I know that was something that was thrown out as well. But we think we have more areas for swim lessons and not less. So I'll send some responses out, out to them. We're also going to have a, a public input session conducted by Stockwell, and that'll be in August. And then really after July 4th, even though we've, staff have been doing some presentations in one-on-one, we really want to get more publication out about the vote. And we think there's good support, but not everybody may know about, that you have to vote for this. And so you'll see that coming out a little bit more. And we want to participate in some of the activities, too, like Sounds of Summer and SMSU Parade, things like that. We might have something at the pool, an open house, open to the community where they can tour the facility and kind of look at some of our challenges just to help provide more information on, on the project. So we're, we're looking forward to that. Trying to think if it was something else I was going to add on the Aquatic Center. Can't think of it right now off the top of my head. Well, maybe I'll just say, we've had some questions. I think probably more so on location. And I know that the mayor and others have responded back. And we've got five or six different bulleted reasons. Everything from it would cost more to it doesn't really fit and other, other reasons. But one of the things that maybe you've questioned is what are you going to do with the current site? And, you know, we, we're obviously going to decommission. It's not going to be an aquatic center. And, and one of the things that Preston and I have talked about is exploring the placement of pickleball courts in the, in the facility where the pool facility is currently at. We have had requests for pickleball grow in the last two years. There doesn't seem to be a lot of private corporate sponsorship like we see in some other larger cities for pickleball. And we don't currently have it in CIP as well. It's just something that came out of the blue. So we want to, we want to explore that. And that may help answer kind of one part. We do know that Legion Field was designated, was donated for the purposes of being a park. And there's, there's no, I know you guys never had this on your brain, but we're definitely going to keep it for park use, no doubt about that. And then finally, I'll just kind of talk a little bit about staffing. Our community education coordinator, her last week is this week. We are going to interview second week in July. Hopefully have somebody in place by September 1. We have a Community Services Admin Assistant who's going to be out an FMLA. We have a resignation Community Services and Admin and a pending FMLA. So on this particular floor, it's going to be, we're, we're really going to be stretched kind of thin. And we're hustling to kind of make up the gaps. So if you don't always see somebody present, we're really sorry about that. But we're going to cover phones and, and do the best we can when we're, when we have, are down a little bit on staff. So I, I just wanted to mention that to, to council. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon? Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll highlight just a couple of things. Tomorrow evening, 4:30, we have our MS4 Annual Public Hearing. Not typically well-attended, but it is tomorrow night. Thursday this week, we have a pre-construction meeting on our Legion Field Phase 2 Pond Project across from Buffalo Ridge. And Parkway Edition over there will be boring the pipe under the railroad and installing the new dry pond onto the wet pond there. So pre-job for that, I think they plan to start sometime after July 4th. We don't have a, a schedule yet. Bid opening for the parking lot behind Ralco, the Lot 2 Block 1, Schwan's Corp. 1 Edition Lot. That bid opening is on July 6th. July 10th, we've got Airport Commission at 4:30, followed by the Joint Airport Zoning Board at 5:30. I think at that meeting, we'll be looking to call for a public hearing on the airport zoning ordinance. So that'll be good to see that continue to move. Channel Parkway Preconstruction Meeting was held on June 20th. Right now, they're telling us the start for that project in August, like the first or second week of August. MMU Water Main Project, the crossing, the two crossings under Highway 23. I believe sometime yet in July, they plan to start that. A little loose on the schedule yet. Lastly, the Mill and Overlay and Shipseal projects are likely not going to occur until August as well. So a little bit of a late start for a lot of our projects, which kind of worked out well for staffing so we could focus on North Third Street as there's a lot going on in that two blocks. So any questions for me? I can answer them, but that's all I've got.
Any questions for Jason? If not, City Attorney Pam?
No, nothing for the good of the whole.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the rest of the agenda items that the council can see. The Public Housing Commission minutes from April, the investment reports, the listing of building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward this, at this meeting this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve to adjourn discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We are adjourned.